The record session of the Board of Education, Calumet Public School District 132 will come to order at 6:06 PM. Roll call.
Almond. Brown.
Harris.
Paris.
Present.
Ivy. Absent.
Present.
Present. For the record, Almond is absent. I mean, Almond, yes, you said absent. Okay, so everyone stand. Press to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the logic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda. So I need a motion to approve the agenda for tonight. Harris, no, I don't stand. Here we have our Board of Education approve the agenda for the April twenty-three record session as presented. It was moved by Harris and probably seconded by Carr. Roll call.
Almond, absent. Rex, present. Harris.
Yes.
Ivy, absent.
Yes.
Story.
Yes. Motion can. So I just want to let the community know before we move on. Ivy, she is absent. Jonathan, there her seat at this time, but if she comes, then of course he will move to give her her seat. All right. No, you're not going home. I heard that. So at this time, we wanna do a presentation to our board members that are leaving us. We want to do it at the topic of our, the women's that leave us is Karen Ivy, Kim Whiten's Almond, Chris Tower, and Patricia Carr. So we do have something of presentation for you all, and I just wanna say we thank you all for serving. Passing away for those who remain. And just still, your service is not over yet. You may not be a board member, but you still a community member, and we ask you to continue to come to the board meetings and for your support. So we want. That's why I'm here, Ms. Harris. So since we still remain. So we want to present this plaque. It says, "Calumet Public School District 132 exemplifying excellence every day." Those are the three E's. In recognition of your dedication and service to the Calumet Public School District 132 Board of Education, Calumet Park, Illinois. And it actually have Patricia Ann Carr serving two thousand eleven to two thousand twenty-three. Thank you. Miss the gap, hold on to that gap. We'll, we'll have a coact moment in a minute. Mrs. Christopher Towers, Jokel. He said, and I'm gonna read it again, "Exemplifying excellence every day in recognition of your dedication and service to the Calumet Public School District 132 Board of Education, Calumet Park, Illinois, the summer twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-three." And we also have the plaques, as you can see the pictures as well. We also have the same plaques for Karen Ivy and also Kim Whiten's Almond, and they will be, we'll deliver their plaques to them. So the board, we want to deliver their plaques to them. Thank you, but could we step down to, off this stage to have a picture? Hold your apples, because they might fall off. Money.
One, two, three. One, two, three. To honor our board members, we invite you to stick around after the board meeting. Have a slow reception, we'll have just to the right other states for our board members.
All right, so you're not off the board yet. We still have work to do. Moving forth with our agenda, we have the superintendent's report.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, board, community. Tonight, we will have Ms. Bates to give us a report on the library, as well as an update from spring break camp. Ms. Hutchinson will give us an update on the audit, and Mr. Corley will provide an update on the summer work projects. Before they do that, I would just like to say that this has been a very busy month here in the district. We had our spring break camp, which was a partnership through the Village of Calumet Park, thanks to Mayor Jensen. It went off and down the hitch, Ms. Bates, and tell you, but I was really proud because our students, they truly exemplified excellence every day of the program. I've heard great things about our students, their behavior in the community, how they acted at the park, but more than anything, I've heard great things about their energy, their engagement, and really just how well they represented our school. So I'm really excited to, to share that. One other thing that I would like to add under my superintendent's report, this is personal. Earlier this month, I had the opportunity, and I was selected to attend the one hundred Superintendent March, which was an effort in Washington DC by the United States Department of Education. And while I was there, I had an opportunity to speak in front of the United States Senate, the Education Appropriation Committee, on S for funding, the funding that we received for COVID. And that conversation was extremely tough. We see at the ground level, the impact of the COVID dollars, being able to upgrade our facilities, really providing the support our students need, the mental health support, the academic supports. But it was a different experience when I was there in Washington. It was political, and I don't consider myself a politician, so I struggle. And I'm sitting there in between the Democrats, who really want schools to receive the funding, and then the Republicans, who say that schools never should have received the funding in the first place. And it was my responsibility to provide an argument as to why schools needed the money. And one of the first things I said was, schools receive S for funding because of their low income status. So the more low income there were, the higher their social economic deficiencies were, the more money they received. Well, there's also a correlation that says those are the same districts who were broke and living paycheck to paycheck prior to COVID. So after the pandemic hit and this money came, school districts began to live off of the money. It became, this is our life, but now that the money is on its way out, it's almost over, a lot of school districts are really questioning, how do we remain solid? And the school districts that primarily service minority students, black and brown. So after about an hour and a half of conversation and grilling and questioning, it was over. And I received a standing ovation, and I think I missed it because I was still shaking and trying to recover from what I just went through. But the United States Secretary of Education, Dr. Cardona, said to me, I've never heard anybody speak with so much research, but so much passion. And I said, well, this is the life that I live on a daily basis. The superintendent is not one of those jobs where we just have somebody driving us around the meetings. We're actually on the ground, talking to the people with the people, trying to make a way. And I shared that with him because I wanted him to understand that this is a real problem that's facing our nation. District 132, we're in good shape, thank God, but the district right across the bridge from us, they're not. And the district right next door to the west, they're not either. So it's our responsibility to fight for the rights of all children, and really to push this battle. So I, I'm really excited for the opportunity. I do not think that's the end, because we left and the Republicans still did not move. So we're still fighting. So I encourage all of you all to continue to have conversation with your legislators, both state and federal, because that's the only way we're gonna really make moves ahead of it. Thank you, Ms. Bates.
Thank you again, and, and welcome everyone. I have, first I want to start with the Library and Media Department report, and I will provide you guys with copies of this as well. Just to let you know that Dr. Burnett has done an outstanding job in trying to keep our school community doing well with resources and our students being able to take out less. This month is National Library Month, and also Poetry Month. So, Ms. Dr. Burnett has worked with our students, and she's still working with our students in pertaining to poetry. They're taking our books on poetry, and they're also doing some things as we prepare for a special event for some of our students to be able to recycle homes. And also, we have our digital collection, which is Destiny, our Destiny Follet, and our Mayon. Mayon is our digital collection of over five thousand titles that can be utilized twenty-four hours a day. That particular collection can be used throughout the summer, weekends, where our students can actually download a book and read, and it's an authentic book. So we, we have that along with our digital follet, Destiny. Destiny provides our students with not only a digital collection, but also with a reinforcement from the books that we have in our library. So we have a plethora of resources for our children, and also she created a really cool return policy where the students can drop them off in the, in the bin. So now I'm gonna move forward with our spring break fun camp, and before I begin, I just want to give a shout out to our Work Study Enterprise directors, owners, Mr. and Mrs. Mitchell, who are here with us tonight. I first want to start off by telling you, our students had an incredible learning experience. We were very honored, and it was just a thrill to see all the energy and excitement. So the picture that you're looking at right now, that's through sixty-two students, it came almost every day. We had a hundred and two students who registered, but sixty-two came. We're very thankful for the vision of our, of our superintendent, which allowed us to be able to have this momentous opportunity. So this was a brainstorming session between myself, Ms. Hutchinson, and Dr. Alexander. And through that brainstorming, it became, the spring work, spring break fun camp was birthed. The goal, as I mentioned, was a hundred students. All students received mailed invitations, as well as flyers. We also took the time to go into our community, McDonald's, McDonald's, Wendy's, and Taco Bell. Couldn't remember the other one. Taco Bell, we dropped off flyers there because we really wanted our students to have an opportunity to be in a safe environment, safe nurturing environment, and that's important too. Transportation was available, but having this community connection with Mayor Jensen and the Calumet Park District made it even more special. Because the students weren't here, they were at our park district and in our recreation center. And I would tell you, the healthy hot breakfast and lunch was the bomb. Our students wanted to eat not just first, but second rounds. And so it wasn't just the boys either, so I just wanted to let you know that. So as you can see, every student was looking like this every day. I arrived every day at seven thirty, some of the students were there at seven twenty with their parents waiting. So that energy, the enthusiasm you see right there, that was every single guy. Here is what we learned. Our students enjoyed every minute. They truly, truly did. I got hugs from parents, I got hugs from students. They asked for seconds, as I mentioned, for this catered meal that we had every day, and it was hot, and it would, when that food arrived, our students knew where to stand. They knew what they were expecting to get, something good. They didn't know what it was, but they knew it was going to be something good. Our students enjoyed the hands-on learning. I can tell you that our students did sign language. They had University of Illinois extension doing hands-on learning. They, they also did something that some of them had done before, they played kickball, which was very fascinating to see children that had not been outside and experienced in that. They planted flower bulbs. There's just so much that they did. But it was through the, our park district, I mean, the recreation center, and of course, Work Study Enterprise, and the relationship of our SD one thirty-two staff that made everything a safe and wonderful experience. We offered a safe environment, as I mentioned before. We had six of our staff members there every single day. We had, of course, Work Study had their team of five adults. We had two security guards, and we also had our district administrative team there every single day. But the beauty of it all, the awesome staff provided us with the support that we needed throughout the day. So children were in a secure nurturing environment from the time they arrived until the time they left. So I want to give you a little glimpse of some of the things that you seen. To your far, to my far right, the sign language class, that happened every single day, they learned how to do the pledge. Some of the kids took the time, some of the kids in the front left, that's the guard that was the, the outside learning support, where the students were able to plant their own flower bulbs, and they took them home. In the, in the bottom left, again, the interaction, but look at those faces of our children. It was just a delight to see the love, the energy, and seeing them outside was really just a sight to see. So here's some of the feedbacks from the survey. We had our parents who completed a survey online, and they said, of course, I want to do this. Several parents mentioned that their children would have been at home playing video games and being by themselves. So they were very appreciative of the experience that we offered. Then one cert, one of the parents mentioned, we enjoy watching our daughter having independence with her peers. She had a wonderful time, excellent idea for the children of Calumet Park. That just set it off right there for me. Says, "My child really enjoyed herself. The setup and the food was great and kid-friendly." That macaroni and cheese, they came back a couple of times for that. And I also want to tell you, we had some people, we had some of our staff members saying, ooh, spicy, we had chicken. Strips, thank you. I'm sorry. Because they said, they're laughing because they say I don't eat that. But anyway, they had chicken strips, and it was spicy. All the children wanted what? Spicy chicken. Every single, from the youngest to the oldest, so that's, that was on there. And then this last one, it says, "Everything and everyone was great. My son enjoyed everything. I will be sending my son back if this offer again." And I just want to also say to our, our school board of members who came out, thank you. Thank you for showing your support, thank you for hanging with us, thank you for wearing every T-shirt and being a part of the team. So again, I want to send a special thank you to Mr. and Mrs. Mitchell of Work Study Enterprises for their commitment to making a difference in the lives of our children. Yes, to our Mayor Jensen and the Calumet Recreation Center for their support, to the board, to Dr. Alexander, and to our staff here at District, District 132. I am honored, and I think it was just an awesome blessing that we're able to offer this free of charge to our students. So thank you, parents, for allowing us to do that. Thank you.
I just want to say, it was a fun time. I know Dr. Alexander's saying, go check it out, go check it out, and I know Board Member Harris, she was, she's been there more than once. But it has been a fun time, and hopefully we can have that partnership. Hopefully we can continue with that partnership and continue on doing that for the spring break, and maybe look into a facet that we can do it yearly. Thank you, thank you.
I don't know if I should wait to, to me and, but it was, it was an honor being able to see Mr. and Mrs. Mitchell there, giving that good, great service. It was delightful to be able to see the red center being utilized, all the babies running around in red shirts, even having people stop and watch the activities that were going on. It's been a long time since Calumet Park has had that, and I would hope and pray that we will continue to have that. You guys, the skit was nice. I was hoping maybe somebody would coordinate and be able to show the board how quickly those babies learn how to do a skit. So we doing something right, okay? But I really appreciate you guys, it was an honor even having you in our community, and look forward to hoping that you guys will be able to do that again. And thank you, staff, for being able to be there, serving continuously during spring break, but thank you guys again.
Good evening. Just wanted to let you know that we finally got our cash totals report from the treasurer's office yesterday. Now that report, it contained our cash balance, our immaterial cash totals, as well as our interest on all of our investment accounts. What we are waiting on right now, we're just waiting to hear from our auditors to make sure that that's gonna be enough information. And if it is, then Dr. Alexander will give you the timeframe of when you can expect to receive the auditing report and when it's gonna be presented. And if it turns out that they still need additional information, the auditors will let us know, and then we will obviously in coordination with the treasurer's office. So I will continue to keep both Dr. Alexander and the Board of Education informed of the status of the audit.
All right, good evening, Board of Education, and community, and staff. Thank you all for being out this evening, and I am going to be going through the summer projects that we have planned for this summer, summer twenty twenty-three. My name is Steve Corley, I'm the Buildings and Browns Director for the school district. This is going to be a busy summer. We'll probably be working for the children to get out all the way until it's almost time for the children to come back in, so I'm looking forward to it. Busy makes time go by faster to me. I don't like just sitting around, when you're busy, it makes the time go faster. All right, so what we'll do, we'll go by school, and I'll give you what the project's name is, the description of it, why we need it, the cost of the project, its proposed timeline, and where, what the funding source is, what the money is gonna be coming from to complete the project. All right, we're gonna start with Borough Academy. Borough Academy is, of course, our private school. And that school is gonna have probably the most projects going on. All right, so we'll start with the first project, I'm sorry, I'm trying to operate two things here, because I can't really see that far, I really need glasses. The first project, main office flooring replacement. So this is something, flooring replacement is something that's been going on over the past two years now. We're doing section by section. We started with our laboratories at Borough, Borough, Borough School and Borough Academy, they've been re-carpeted with carpet tile. So now we're moving on to the main office, and we're gonna do the same thing. We're gonna replace, replace the current roll carpet with twenty-four by twenty-four inch carpet tiles. The reason that we need it, carpet is old, it's beyond cleaning in some several sections. I'm sure we've all experienced that at homes before, when you clean the section, it's probably still there. So we're gonna get rid of that look and update that area. And that project is due to start in July of this year, twenty twenty-three, subsequent to summer school. So as soon as summer school is out, I am going to take over the school, so just to let the, all the staff know. We is, we are taking the Buildings and Browns, taking over the school when summer school is over, so we can get our projects completed. Project cost thirteen thousand seven hundred seven dollars, and the funding source will be S for three. Next project, teachers, same thing in the teachers lounge, teachers break room and coffee room, new flooring, same scheme as the main office. Project starts July, right after summer school. Project cost eight thousand eight hundred fifty-two dollars, funding source, S for three. Moving on, wall paint, so those same areas where we're going to be painting, I mean, re-carpeting and re-floring, we're also gonna be painting those areas. So we're gonna give that whole Borough Main, Borough Academy main office and the teachers' work room and coffee room, a new look of carpeting and red paint. Also, door access system. So here at Calumet, there is a door access system, which is pretty much a key card system. So we're gonna be adding that to Borough Academy, so all of our schools will, they'll have key access systems. The reason that we're doing that is, it's a way to really keep people out of certain, certain areas. You can unlock areas at a certain time, you can lock them down, or certain people, only certain cars can access them. It's a better way to keep account for all areas of your building, who's entering and who's exiting. The timeline for that is actually June twenty twenty-three, that's actually something that can go on while summer school is in session. We plan to be completing that in July. Project cost twenty-four thousand five hundred twelve dollars, funding source, S for three. Emergency lighting unit replacement, so that's one of, that's gonna be what it is. It's the individual units that are around the school, we're gonna swap those out, and some of those are original to the building, so it's time for them to be swapped out. So that's what we're gonna do to make sure we have lighting in event of a power outage. We're gonna do that through June, and we should be completing in June. The cost of that, four thousand two hundred dollars, funding source, S for three. Drag race board installation, this actually happened at Borough Academy and Borough School. Actually, the reason why we're doing this is because a lot of the rooms still had chalkboards in them, believe it or not. The old yellow chalk and white chalk, and you know you were a teacher because you'd leave and you had chalk that's all over you. So that is no longer a thing, because we have actually already replaced all of our chalkboards with magnetic drag race boards. So we initially wanted to complete this during the summer, but Dr. Alexander gave us a slight nudge, and said, let's get this done now. So we actually completed that back in February. So all the classrooms now have magnetic drag race boards, so that's a great thing, and the teachers were ecstatic when they walked in and saw that they had new boards. So thank you, Board of Education, for that. And the last project at Borough Academy is the main office, and all the interior offices inside the main office will receive some new furniture. If you've ever been to Borough Academy's main office, you'll see that all the furniture is pretty much piecemeal. It's a desk from here, cabinet from there, over here, get a cabinet, get this, buy a cabinet, hey, you can do this. So we plan on making everything more functional and uniform in that office, so when it's, when you come in, it's gonna be a very well-exciting, new carpet, new paint, new furniture. The cost of, we plan on doing that in July after summer school is out, we should be able to complete that in about a week, if, probably over two days, really, not even a week. Cost of that, so this is the entire main office, furniture fifty-five thousand four hundred thirty-six dollars, funding source, S for three. All right, moving on to Borough School. Borough School, of course, is our elementary, third and fifth grade, everybody knows that, our guests just found out. Number one, our board replacement. Um, number one, our boiler replacement. Um, we've already, we have one new boiler, uh, that was replaced back in 2019, so pretty much what we're going to do is replace the other boiler, um, there, the older boiler that's there, it's about, almost thirty years old now, it's passed its useful life. Um, there's nothing worse than being in the middle of the winter, and I'm talking about myself having to worry about if the boiler went out or it's going to go out. So, the two new boilers, I can sleep through the night in February and not have to worry about it. And we don't have to worry about our schools being cold, even though that's never happened before, um, but we don't want it to happen. So, um, that project is going to actually start in June. Um, there's no summer school, uh, activities at Borough School as of now, so if we can get right to work, uh, soon as school is out, that all the installation is going to start at Borough School. Cost of that, one hundred thirty-three thousand three hundred forty-eight dollars, funding source S3. Uh, just like I explained at Borough Academy, we're also going to have door access system put in at Borough School as well. So, uh, our whole district will be able to make key access system from that point, um, starting the school year. Uh, moving on, uh, playground equipment and surfacing replacement. So, Borough School is going to get new playground equipment and safety surfacing. So, we're going to be getting rid of, rid of the rubber mold that's out there that's everywhere, and it's going to be replaced with the rubber safety surfacing, which is the new trend in playground safety right now. Um, right now, the, the existing, the equipment is old, uh, and it's actually not ADA, uh, not all of it is up to ADA requirements. So, we want to make it to, if we did have a student in wheelchair, which we did, they will be able to have the same access as any, any of the other students. They want to roll up to a slide board, they'll be able to do that. If they want to roll up to a climbing apparatus, they'll be able to do that. We don't want to section, section them off in the area where they can't access. They should be able to access any of, any area of the playground. So, that's one of our main reasons for completing this project. This project is starting in June, soon as school is out. Uh, the cost of the project, one hundred eighty-three thousand three dollars, uh, funding source S3. Asphalt repainting and additional parking, additional staff parking. Um, all of the, this, uh, existing asphalt is going to be, uh, milled, which is going to be chopped up into really fine pieces and used as a base for brand-new asphalt. Um, that's much needed in that area. Anybody who's ever been in the back around Borough School, it's, it's, that, that area's in need of much TLC. So, it's going to be getting new asphalt, and with that project, we're going to also be, um, adding some staff parking to that. Um, so that project is going to start in June as, as well, and we plan on completing that in August. That's going to be a complete redo. Um, it has there, the project cost is to be determined because this project is going to be bid out publicly bid, uh, so the lowest, most responsible bidder is going to, uh, win that contract, uh, that's open for anybody to bid. Uh, that bid actually went public today, so it went out public today, um, and the pre-bid meeting is going to be next week. So, uh, hopefully we'll get some nice competitive bids and be able to get the best price for it, for the, uh, project. Uh, S3 is the funding source, and in addition to that particular project, um, that is a project that we actually, uh, was working with the community with. I met with one of our community members that stayed exactly across the street from, um, Borough's playground. And initially, our plan was to make, uh, the entry and exit on Bishop Street, uh, for car, for teachers to come in and park there and exit there as well. Um, and the residents were not very happy about that because they were worried about losing parking spaces, which parking is very already limited around the schools to begin with. So, uh, we met with, met with the community, um, and they actually did, um, they weren't active, and they started a petition. They didn't want us to do that. They didn't want to lose the parking spaces. Uh, and we were very receptive to that and understood it. So, we went back and worked with our engineers, uh, the engineering company and our architects, and we do have a revision to our plan now that will allow us to have teachers exit, uh, out into the bus lane alley and go out and use the exit that we already have instead of having residents lose parking spaces. So, please, we want the community to know that the school is not here to try to take over. We want to work with the community when it comes to the areas that surround the schools. All right, um, next. Um, next we have, sorry about that. Okay, greenhouse installation. Um, this is an exciting project. Um, I think we're going to be probably the first, uh, elementary school district in this immediate area, I don't, that I, that I know of, that's going to have a fully functioning greenhouse. This is actually a part of the playground and staff parking renovation. So, that whole area behind Borough, uh, Elementary School is going to have a brand-new look to it. So, this will be a fully functioning greenhouse that's going to be an extension of the science classroom. Uh, students will actually be able to, uh, practice earth, uh, earth sciences, biology, and agricultural sciences. So, they'll be able to do things that a lot of students at other, other, uh, surrounding schools are not going to be able to do, but we're proud about that. The project start June 2023, completion, uh, Ju- July 2023. Project cost ninety-four thousand one hundred seventy-six dollars fifty-eight cents, funding S3 grant. We already talked about the drag race boards, um, and we're going to be adding, uh, kitchen appliances, actually not only at Borough School, but Calumet School as well. Um, and we're going to be doing that because we want to be prepared in the future. If we did ever want to go to a fully staffed cooking kitchen, we want to have the appliances already on hand and ready to use, um, because it's based, just talking about how much our kids love food, so there's nothing like home cook. I mean, I think most of us in here who were in school in the seventies and eighties, we got cooked food in, at school, no idea. Um, some stuff I love, you know, better than, I'm not going to say better than home, so like tell my parents, please. Um, so, not better than home, but some of the food was very good. Uh, we, we were actually excited when we saw if it was pizza day, we had some stuff called chalupa, I don't know if you guys remember that, CPS, that's CPS all day. Um, but anyway, um, we want to be that way. We want our students to be excited about school lunch and be, uh, receive nutritious meals as well. So, we plan on doing that by adding, um, new, a new walk-in freezer, uh, here, I will, at Calumet, I'll get to that in Borough School, uh, cooking range, which will allow the kitchen staff to, uh, when it comes to it, be able to cook meals for our students. On to Calumet School. Um, the biggest project that we're going to be getting started on is the new gymnasium classroom addition here at Calumet School. Um, so, uh, we plan on building a new gymnasium classroom addition that's actually going to be right south of here in the current field area. It's going to take up, um, maybe about three-quarters of the field. There will be some green space left back there. Um, the reason for the project is actually because this current gym on the other side of this wall is actually not, i.e. the same regulation size. So, if you guys didn't know, with our boys and girls, well, girls sometimes, but it's even not feasible for them, camp, really whole athletic competitions here, especially boys, because you have some boys now that can shoot from this end of the court or this court all the way to the other end of the court, uh, which is not very competitive as well. And we also want to be able to comfortably house our whole student body and the community for large events as well without having to go on site. So, this new facility is going to help us stay in-house, stay on campus, provide a safe environment, and have great events and athletic events for our students. Our project start, uh, for this is going to be October 2023, uh, with project completion August 2024 with the opening for the August 2024, '25 school year. The project cost is not to exceed ten million dollars, and the funding source is going to be S2 grant and S3 grant. Uh, already talked about the kitchen appliances, um, and the last thing at Calumet here is going to be stair tray replacement. That's going to be, uh, the reason we're replacing the stair tray is actually on the north side of the building. Uh, some of our stair tray is, actually was not installed correctly, uh, when the building was constructed, and it's now cracking in some places, so we don't want them to become tricky hazards for people traversing the stairs. So, we plan on replacing those, and that's actually going to happen July 2023 and complete July 2023. Cost for that, about twenty thousand one hundred dollars, and that's also going to be funded by S3. So, again, it's going to be a super busy summer this summer, um, we're excited because, again, I said it when I presented to the community before, we don't want our students to go elsewhere and be amazed at other great facilities. We want them to have great facilities now. Very passionate about that. I come from the classroom, I, it, it makes me cringe when students say, uh, "This school is, it's, it's dirty anyway, it's torn down anyway." And sometimes it's just a thing to say, but it really makes me feel some kind of way. So, we want our students to be proud of their surroundings, and when they go to other schools, if they ever transfer and go to, uh, schools in, you know, more affluent areas, they're not amazed because they came from that, and they want to, they know what it's like to be in a great educational system. So, in a nutshell, that's the Buildings and Grounds Department for the summer of 2023. Thank you.
Before I have any questions, I think it's awesome. I am so, so excited about those chalkboards. I will be coming in to look because that was one of my biggest things, going into the classroom and seeing those chalkboards, and here we are in this new day and age. But I am so excited, thank you so, for that, that all the teachers have those whiteboard. Any questions for the board? Thank you for your report, detailed report, thank you.
That concludes my report.
Next on the, um, agenda, consent agenda items, um, who are going to be moved and have more discussion on consent agenda item B, okay. Yeah, I'm getting lost. Okay, thank you. B2. So, consent agenda is, we asked, uh, we got to remove consent agenda items B2 approval of accounts payable, so we will have more discussion of that. However, the consent in the agenda items, personnel items A, uh, B1 approval of payroll in the amount of seven hundred fifty-one thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars and thirty cents, and C, the minutes for regular, C1, regular session minutes, R16, C2, Buildings and Grounds Committee Min- Committee Minutes, and C3, finance committee minutes, and also D, summary of fund balance report for J-Rate in Fe- February. Now, a motion. It was moved by Ms. Harris and probably second by Ms. Carr that we approved the consent agenda items, um, A, B1, C, and D. I was about to say, will call John.
Alvin, Abson, Brown?
Yes.
R?
Yes.
Harris?
Ivy, Abson, Towers?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
I was A, B1, C, and D.
Okay, so it's up for discussion for, um, B1, approval of accounts payable. Floor is open.
Thank you. Um, so, thank you, thank you, staff, that was a really good, good report. Um, I, I just wanted to get some clarity around DLA, uh, as you might ask for a copy of the, um, invoice for March. And so, the first question is just the estimated construction cost is based, is that a DLA estimate, or what, what did the estimated construction cost?
So, DLA, as our architect, they do the, the costing out of what the project will cost. Ten million basis inclusive of construction costs, the cost that we have to pay for purchase services, which would be the engineers and architect, as well as the contingency. So, the estimated actual cost of construction is seven point five, we have, I think that's what's on the, um, invoice, is seven point five million, and then from there, DLA receives a percentage, which is standard in construction. The architects and the engineer receive a percentage, and then the remainder of the balance is the, uh, contingency.
So, they're estimating seven point five million, their total fees will be six hundred thirty-seven thousand five hundred?
Yes.
And the eight point five percent is, we think, what you're saying is standard?
Yes, so, the state of Illinois through bidding procedures, they, uh, afford what the engineer's cost is, what the architect's cost is, and essentially, it's a blanket number. So, if it's ten million dollars, you give eight percent, five percent, whatever it is, that's the most that they can charge for their services.
Okay. Um, and so, they are completed, one hundred percent complete on the schematic design and then the design development, they are at twenty percent completion, um, and at track, so this, their, their estimated expenses for this, this particular accounts payable comes to about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars total.
Yes.
Um, and we can expect that they're going to ask or come to us with another half million dollars worth of them?
So, throughout the course of the project, they will continue to bring, uh, bid voices. So, right now, we get a big bulk because the schematics are the drawings. So, the act, the architect, they actually do the drawings so that it goes out to bid. The architect also performs the services of, um, land survey, soil samples, rock samples, water samples. They do everything with, uh, MWRD, the Metropolitan Water. So, the architects do a lot of the surveying, uh, in the beginning, as well as the designing of the project. Right now, we're working on getting everything ready to go out to bid. Uh, on Wednesday, I believe, they're coming back out to do a second round of soil samples. So, it's a, before we even break ground, it's a long process that goes through. So, the architect gets a pretty large percentage upfront because they've designed the project, uh, as it says, a hundred percent is complete. And then throughout the project, there are different milestones that we hit, uh, inclusive of them verifying that the work was done by whoever the general contractor is, um, and then they're on the site every week monitoring the project, so that's where their funds come from.
And so, the bid, so there's an estimation, so if they are going over, uh, the seven point five million or under, so let's hypothetically say they go under, are we, are we owed refund? Or is this estimated, because it's estimated?
So, once the bid comes out, then the numbers will right-size. The numbers will right-size. So, that's, it's, it should say on the estimated project cost. So, once the bid is done, the board approves it, accepts it, then we have a real dollar amount. Now, at the end of the project, let's say he comes in under budget, then that's what their counts will reflect because it's still have a percentage that they have to fault to. So, it's really a safeguard for the district that if it's eight percent, you're going to get eight percent of whatever the cost is. What we said, lower or higher, it's, it's eight percent.
And, and so, what might we be doing to be able to, you know, I got to ask, I don't, I've, I hear you, Chris, about quality. I can hear him saying it already, but to the extent that there may be some, I don't, I don't imagine with concrete prices that we're going to see a downward trend, but could you just talk about sort of what the district is thinking about and, and trying to keep us at that seven million or?
Well, the first thing is to keep them on time. Uh, we know the time is up, as, as, so, Mr. Corley, myself, Ms. Hudson, we're having conversations all the time. Um, so that's the first part, stay on time with the project. Uh, the second part is we've gone through, uh, various iterations of looking at materials. Uh, we went with pretty much the exact same materials this building is built with, uh, concrete slabs, what was the technical name?
Precast concrete.
Precast concrete. So, basically, that's a cheaper alternative than straight brick, but it makes sense because essentially all we're doing is replicating the, the look of the current building. We've talked about the different qualities of that glass, we've talked about the different qualities of flooring, um, equipment, materials, all of those things. Um, in many cases, you don't want to skip on quality because we do want this building to last for a long time without having to make renovations, but there are some ways that you can cut down costs. Um, and Mr. Corley, he, he's pretty tight, so, uh, we've done a good job keeping the costs down. Um, the other part of it is we recognize that the supply chain is a issue right now. We recognize the cost of wood is a metal. Uh, so, we're trying to keep that in mind. Uh, we're trying to get the bid out so that they can purchase things as soon as possible. We also know that the sooner they get a roof on the building, the sooner they can start doing everything else. So, the goal is, if they can start in October, um, the foundation will be down, and then, you know, as the winter progresses, they can get the walls and the roof up, so that as it's still cold outside and stony, they can work on the inside. So, again, stay on track, on track, time is the big deal.
Thank you. Um, and so then, so those are the questions I have about this particular piece, street you have heard.
Um, I just have one question. Um, what caused the water meter repair? Was it to the village, the two thousand? Was it to the village, the two thousand dollars?
Mr. Corley, would you like to speak on this? Because I don't want to talk about it. It's going to upset me, but Mr. Corley, you can take it.
Sure. So the water meter that was actually here at Calumet, you notice, nobody comes to your door anymore to read the meter. Everything is done by radio now. They drive down the street and that's how they take your readings. So for some time, without us knowing.
Five years.
About five years, without us knowing, the village was estimating how much water we were using. So that's where that huge charge came from. And we didn't know until we got this huge bill accumulated over five years, that they weren't actually getting accurate water readings from our meters, meters right there in their room over there. So that actually happened here, that was happening at Burr Old School as well. So we've got the meters corrected now. So we are getting accurate water meters, but that's where that huge bill came from. And that was unbeknownst to us until we got this huge bill. Yeah, and the village was, they were essentially estimating how much water we were using instead of getting accurate readings.
So myself and Ms. Hutchinson, we marched into Villa Tall, rigging, raising all kinds of sand. And I was not satisfied with the response I had because I said, well, somebody's here every day all day. You can call, you can get in whenever you need to, but essentially it was negligence on the village. So I did have a conversation with the man who the village is going to take an under advisement, hopefully for refund later. But it's unfair to us and one of the things I said, what if we were a regular taxpayer, a regular homeowner? Who could afford to pay five years' worth of backwater bills? So I do hope that we can get that resolved and some positive resolution to that.
Do you have any?
What I was going to say was that this is something I'm dealing with in other school districts as well. The water meter being broken or not reading correctly, not reporting the right codes, there's a lot of that going around. First, I'm hearing, obviously, something I'd like to look at a little bit closer with Steve and the team here, but something I'll get.
Yeah, that's a fine to come because I don't even know what's their estimates according to what's their actual over the years, right? Okay, thank you for that, Graham. We, we definitely will follow up to that, Dr. Alexander, because for five years and then all of a sudden, you said it was from both of the schools that is in the estimate. So I guess one of the schools it was okay, the estimate, the water? Which, you said all of them or just two?
Just two. Burr Oak Academy is the newer school, so they have newer technology that allows them to read it the way it needs to be. Academy does.
Thank you for that. Any more questions?
And so just maybe if you could just share a trip to Springfield for us? When I just saw that it was a treat by, is this a planned trip or it already happened?
Is it Washington or Springfield?
I don't know. I had it in Springfield.
I thought it was Springfield. Is it for the eighth grade future?
Our eighth graders went on a field trip.
Eighth grade, eighth year. Who's going to Washington?
No, my. Our eighth graders went to a field trip to Washington, visit the.
Springfield. He thought it's not Washington.
They went to Springfield, Illinois, to, they went to the Lincoln Museum, got a chance to tour Springfield. I think it's the Illinois thing to do when you're at eighth grade. So our students did, they've done it here pretty much every year. So the cost and the payables was for the buses that they took. That was paid for out of our Q's after school rent that pays for transportation and field trips.
Thank you for that. Any more questions? Okay, so I need a motion to approve, approve B two. Wait a minute. Approve B two, the accounts payable in the amount of one million point seventy-eight thousand four hundred ninety dollars and twenty-eight cents. Harris, move. Okay. Second. It was moved by Harris and probably second by Towers. Will call John.
Yes. Alvin, Abson, Brown?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harris? Ivy, Abson Towers?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Ivy, B two, Harris.
Okay, going into our action items. A, approval of the school year twenty-three, twenty-four curriculum adoption plan. May I have a motion for that? Were you all, did you all get a chance to look at the adoption plan for the curriculum? Hey, may I have a motion for that? Let's move back here, as probably second by Towers. The M B P move that the Board of Education approves the school year twenty-three, twenty-four curriculum adoption plan. Oh, she wants to, come on. Okay, they, they said they found it. You don't even have to present. Thank you so much. Curriculum adoption plan for a total cost of two hundred seventeen. There's an error here. This, that, you have the, it's two hundred seventeen, we have too many digits. Look at that. Right. All right, now, let me read. The M B P move that the Board of Education approves the school year twenty-three, twenty-four curriculum adoption plan for a total cost of two hundred seventeen thousand five hundred three dollars and seventy-eight cents as presented. Will call.
Alvin, Abson, Brown?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ivy, Abson Towers?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
And thank you, Ms. Dr. Bates, for being ready. And we did do our homework on that. And to Mr. Driver, I know he was due to be looking to that science program. Kudos to you in the social studies program. The students will really enjoy that as well as the teachers. Okay, item. Okay, approval of the school year twenty-four consolidated district plan with an amendment to change the date from twenty nineteen, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Mr. Store, that's, that is correct.
You changed, that's the actual date?
So it says the consolidated district plan must be submitted initially from the school year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty and updated annually thereafter. So essentially, in the motion, you're seeing the history and the tracking of what the consolidated district plan is. This comes directly from ISB. So it starts out.
So that date is actually right?
Yes. So it consolidated district plan changed from when there was no child left behind. So those dates are actually correct.
So what he's referring to, if you want to look, he's on page eighty-three in the packet. What we were talking about, if you want to take a look before we approve. So that went all the way back to no child left behind from twenty nineteen school year?
No, the consolidated district plan started in twenty nineteen. So we just extract this language from ISB and we put it here. So everything is there.
All right. Any questions? Are you there? Okay. So now, approval of the school year twenty-four, year twenty-four consolidated district plan. May I have a motion for it? It has been moved by Harris and second by Towers that the Board of Education approved Calumet Public School District one thirty-two consolidated district plan for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four as presented. Will call.
Alvin, Abson, Brown? Carr?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ivy, Abson Towers?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Okay, items, as in the Board of, table items, action items, C, approval of school year twenty-three, twenty-four, nine-year employee performance-based compensation program. Table D, approval of the school year twenty-three, twenty-four administrative employee contract. And then E, approval of school year twenty-two, twenty-three superintendent's performance evaluation. Table it to closed session. Has been moved by Brown, probably second by Carr. To move, to move those items closed session. Will call.
Yes. Alvin, Abson, Brown?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harris? Ivy, Abson Towers?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Okay, public comments. If you intend to speak, please fill out completely your questions and comments form and present it to the superintendent's secretary at this time. The board will be prepared to address those comments related to the agenda within a reasonable time. However, the comments may be forwarded to the superintendent for an individual response. No other discussions or actions will take place. Please remain seated until you are recognized by the board president. Every person intended to speak must come to the podium to state your comments, questions. Please state your name when giving your comments. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Do we have any public comments? No comments. Yes, we do. There you go. Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Mitchell, please come to the podium. Please come to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to just start by just telling everybody to applaud our superintendent board for our partnership. I just wanted to say thank you to Superintendent Dr. Alexander and his administrative team for their greatness and excellence in our partnership. Our goal for work studying enterprise is to partner with school districts, and we've been doing it for almost thirty years in the Maxon area. And we partner with, we partner with Countrywide Appeals right now, District one sixty-two, District one fifty-nine, and now one thirty-two. What do we do, see here, and I, I just had to say this. My husband's more of a community activist. I stay out of the politics, as Dr. Alexander said. We're all about the work, we're all about the children. Your children were great. When we were saying our goodbyes on Fridays, I was in tears. It was just one week and we just bonded with them. It was some kids that we, that people thought we could have issues with, we didn't have issues with. And we really enjoyed working with your administrators. They truly showed that they love children and they're not here for the politics or the politics. They were here, yes. They were here for the children and my husband kept saying, you, we've never seen this before, rolling up the sleeves and getting out there working with the children. So you guys have great leaders in place and I'm just going to continue to pray for you and pray that we continue to partner with you any way we can because it does still take a village to raise children. So I want to say thank you. And like I said to the board members, I say, you guys are a different kind of breed because they were talking and, and they were just so engaged. So I just want to say thank you from my husband and I and Work Study Enterprise Incorporated.
Thank you, thank you very, very much. So, oh, business, the policy committee update. Unfortunately, we have not had a policy meeting. I do know that we do have to have a policy committee meeting due to the fact we have to be in compliance because the five-year, our revisions are up. So we do have to agree to that order and get those policies updated and approved. Building and grounds committee update.
There's nothing we can say other than, let's give Mr. Corley a round of applause. So there's nothing else I can say other than that I'm going to miss working with this brother out of my last Buildings and Grounds meeting.
Finance committee update.
And I want to remind, Mr. Harris, you're always welcome. The door is always open. Come on back. For the finance committee meeting, great, great chance to meet and work with Ms. Hutchinson. We essentially glad to hear there's been some movement on the audit. There were some concerns that it was taking a bit longer. I did ask the treasurer come, and so I'm hoping we get into him at this meeting, but I'm hoping that we can get him to give us an update as soon as possible. I'd like to see Mr. Sheen. We had, it was a great presentation around the school year twenty-two, twenty-three grants. And we had some helpful conversation around salary surveys. I understand that the IT contract will be, you are going to take them and you're going to kind of sort of see how things land, where things land. So we don't anticipate that there will be a conversation about a new contract in this area, exactly.
The, we plan to bring the contract extension in May. So essentially, it's the same contract, very similar to what happened last year. There are, when you go out for bid for IT, it's an extremely complex process and we just are not there yet, ready to, you know, take that step. So we're going to take another year and have a clear court to help us out to get it so that by next year, we can do a full bid.
Okay, so thank you, Superintendent. And then we talked about just the bid, bid requirements. I was intrigued about what we were doing with the gym somewhere to hear that we are going to be moving on, getting a bid out for those services, not this month, early next month. And then the only other thing that was sort of perhaps interest is, again, we, I think, are at the end of an intergovernmental agreement with, or the Calumet Township, the trustees of the Calumet Township School, something or another. I think we're at the end of that, that intergovernmental agreement with sort of township for, as an auditor. And so questions about whether we needed to sort of either pay attention to that, it is out of our hands, obviously, but I think, you know, sort of showing up or meeting or having a conversation about, is this the right treasurer for us? You know, it's just sort of top of mind for me. And I don't know that we can really do anything, but it should, we should pay attention to it because I think it's happening in May, if I'm not mistaken. Other than that, it was a good meeting and we'll be excited to be working with Ms. Hutchinson.
All right, good business. Do we have any FOIA updates?
Yes, we have one since our last board meeting and that's it.
One chair, one, two, one, two. Yes, since our last board meeting, we've had one FOIA and that's been resolved.
Thank you. So the FOIA seem to be on the decline. That's a good thing. Oh, man, I was supposed to say it. Okay. All right, well, I'll re-kill. I see. All right, board members report. Everybody, we'll come, start with you, Mr. Thompson.
Only thing I'd like to say in my two minutes, this is my last board meeting. It's been a journey, four years. I think we're comfortable a lot with this board. Sometimes it may seem like we did not. I would say this was four years of constant change. My first board president was Ivy, then I had Ms. Harrison, now we have Ms. Story. We changed two attendants, started with Dr. Rills, now we have the great Dr. Alexander. We had four finance officers since I've been here. Within four years, we changed principals. We did a lot of changes in this, in this district. And also, we cannot forget that we served through COVID. And through COVID, all those different changes went from in-person classrooms, virtual classrooms, from virtual meetings, in-person meetings. I think we did a phenomenal job when you look at everything that went, took place in its totality. I think we were able to do what we came here to do. And I just want to encourage the board members and encourage the rest of the staff here to let anyone tell you that the best days of Calumet Park is behind the. Um, let anyone tell you that the best days of Calhoun Park is behind us, that is definitely not the case. The best days of Calhoun Park in this district is before us. And we just stay the course, stay the course, keep doing what we're doing, and welcome them. I wish the new board members was here. I wanted to welcome them tonight. And I'm just looking forward to, uh, being off this board for a while. I still got support, you know, it's just been a great opportunity. I really feel like we met some great people, we have some great friends, and long-term friends. We got, we did what we came here to do. And I would like to say for myself, I only missed one meeting since I've been on this board. Not one board meeting, I'm telling you, we have a lot of meetings. So people don't understand, when you see these board members, there's committee meetings, especially when he's trying to get a superintendent. It's like they was calling us for meetings every other day. Uh, this is a thankless job. It really is a thankless job. So I take my hat off to people like Ms. Carr who has served on this board for so long. I have no idea how she done it, and, um, I'm glad to be off this board. Thank you.
Drop the mic. I, I don't have anything to say, except, uh, staff, bravo, yay, yay. I'm all in, John. See remarkable changes, really affirming to thank Dr. Alexander and staff. And the last thing I want to say is, uh, Mr. Towers, Ms. Carr, it's been absolute pleasure. And I wish you all the best in whatever you do outside of the board. Um, I certainly hope that we get to call on you and that you come and do your public comments every once in a while just to keep us on our toes. It's been an honor. Thank you. I wish you all the best.
I want to say it's been a roller coaster ride in this district, being on the board. But I enjoy each and every moment of it. I've met some fabulous educators in this district. And as Towers said, we've been, I've been under two superintendents. And the previous superintendent, I must say, this school, she went to build the new school. Children, I will never forget the excitement that they had on their faces when they walked up and they seen this new school. Because my daughter went to the, the one that was a hundred years old. So we've done a lot of great things in this district. We're a small community. But we've done big things, and we've had marvelous people, and I will be coming to visit. You're not getting rid of me that quick. It's been twelve consecutive years, and I thank each community member that voted me back in, back to back. Dan White, thank you for all your support. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Ms. Carr. Ms. Harris?
I wanted to say, uh, congratulations to you guys retirement. Also to the staff, you guys did again a phenomenal job for the spring break. I am so like hoping that we have that again. Um, Mr. Corley, you're phenomenal, so I don't have anything to say, but you, you does such great work around the district. And, uh, can't thank you enough, but I'm glad you are doing exactly what you do. Um, I had an awesome time in, uh, Florida, Tampa with the conference. Uh, this conference was kind of different. Uh, and it was basically about safety. Uh, we had just had the, the Tennessee shooting. Uh, there were, the district of that shooting, um, superintendent spoke. Uh, also one of the police officers that were there. Um, and he spoke highly that schools need to re- revalue, re- re- look, look more into your safety, your security system. You know, we need to bump it up. Uh, there were some people there speaking about having guns, teachers having guns again, so this is being brought up again. And that's kind of scary, okay, very scary. But again, um, we had that some years back when we voted on, uh, teachers having guns, but it, it didn't pass, but we were short by six votes. So it, it was close, very close. Uh, so now they're talking about that again. So I preach about safety. Safety is number one. Gun violence has gone crazy. I don't know. But there's something that we should just keep speaking about and looking more into. We can't have enough, uh, safety in schools. And that's just the bottom line. And they spoke so much about kids having the services that they need because of what they're seeing on TV, what they're hearing about it. I even had one of my daughter's friends say, I'm nervous about going to college. Because why? They are shooting in college too, which is true. We cannot get away from it. And it is so scary for a young lady to say, I'm afraid to go to college because why? I'm going to get away from home, and it may be a shooting. Whether it's white school, black school, it doesn't matter. It's there. So again, um, that was something different. I had so many, uh, printouts from the, uh, the conference. I didn't have time to do all that printout. It's about a thousand pages. Um, but again, that was something that I hope here in our district, we talk more about. Human trafficking, shootings, everything, and name the sun, so, but thank you, girls.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Last but not least, um, I just want to say congratulations. This is truly a retirement. But Chris, you don't have to act like that, that you're just throwing us to the curb. We know where you live. No. But I, I, we, we have, I can concur that we have had some, some ups and downs and, and agreements and disagreements. But we still are, um, coming as one for student growth. I know sometimes, uh, they have seen us, uh, in front of you with our disagreements. And I can say this, we all have different personalities. And you all, as an education, know because kids have different personalities and definitely staff members have different personalities. So one thing I would say, we have to always differentiate, even with the adults. Last but not least, uh, congratulations. We, we will definitely be looking for you in the crowd to see if you are showing up and just supporting the community. Uh, Mr. Towers, I want to put you on first street. When you started this project, even though you may not be on the board, you still be active within. And we're going to pass, and that's to challenge you to do that for us. Ms. Carr, as far as equity and, and being, um, equal and bringing that to the board as you started, we're looking forward to you to continue to that. Um, last but not least, thank you, Ms. Mitchell. But thank you very, very much. It was an honor to work with you and, uh, Dr. Bates. For, um, and the team, for just bringing one that, um, that spring, spring break into Dr. Alexander. I did get a chance to go over there and actually serve, and the base was right. They wanted more. One little boy came up and said, I wasn't up here. And they said, well, what's that stain on your shirt? So it was just, that was funny, just how they wanted just keep coming back, and, uh, it was, it was a joy. And even with the kickball, I understand somebody got hurt. It was an adult. I'm not going to say any names, Mr. Mitchell. But it was an adult. Was trying to play kickball and, and he, he had a little minor injury, but he's here well, and we appreciate him. But just keep up the good work. We hope that this get out into the community, this get out with the staff, and that we'll have more staff, more parents seeing how successful it was so they could bring their kids. So I just want to thank you for that. And last but not least, I do want to give the date for the installation for the new board members. Um, Judge, um, Toya Hare, she will be officiating the oath. Um, it will be May fourth, two thousand twenty-three at six o'clock. So it'll be May fourth, two thousand twenty-three. The installations of new board members are just going to on record at six o'clock. May fourth, yes. So if you're not doing that, come on out, meet the new board members. There will be four new board members. The ones that remain are saying myself, Harris, and Ms. Brown. Um, we are on for another two years, so we will still continue to see our face. And without further ado, uh, we do have some refreshments. So we're going into closed session, but we do want you to stay for some refreshments. And when we go into closed session, you all, can we come back to closed session? Have a recess and come back to closed session like seven thirty, seven forty-five? Is that okay? So you all can get something to eat in, so seven forty-five to go to closed session. But we will have a recess until then, then we go to closed session, okay? So, so we will, so they can go and get something to eat. It's the, after we come out of closed session? So everybody have to wait around? Or it's just for, yeah, well, we, we? It doesn't encourage us to hurry up, but we will want the staff to stay to at least get something. Okay, now you got, being here, uh, motion to exit the closed session. Have a motion to move to closed session. Being here, I move to that the co- Board of Education going to closed session for the discussion pursuant to section two, C three of the Open Meetings Act to consider the reasons establishing or filing, filing a, filling a vacancy on the public body. Information regarding appointment, employment, or dismissal of an employee or officer, contract, grievances, negotiation, pending, threatened, or imminent litigation. Real estate, student discipline, super, we need a period here somewhere. Superintendents and or board evaluated performing. Can I get a roll call?
Alvin, Abson, Brown, yes. Carter?
Yes.
Harrison? Ivy, Abson, Towers?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Motion, Harry, and Seth, what is that we're getting?
Thank you. All right, we got to move them on. Now they going to get set up now, Dr. Alexander? Okay. Um, we kept too long, could you stay just a little bit so we can, you can eat something? And I heard it was the caterers from the, um, spring break caterers. All right, we got to, um, come back and open back in session. Uh, Ms., the time is now, oh, we need a motion?
Motion.
So it has been moved by Harris and second by Towers to, um, come back and open, um, se- open our session. Open session, there you go. Roll call.
Yep, Alvin, Abson, Brown, yes. Carter?
Yes.
Harris?
Here.
Ivy, Abson, Towers?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, action I O C, approval of school year twenty-three, twenty-four, non-union employee performance-based compensation program. Um, may I have a motion?
Motion.
It has been moved by Harris, probably second by, because that's in rubber rules over, probably second by Carr, I'm sorry. Um, so you got me off. Approve those, that we said approve the school year twenty-three, twenty-four, non-union employee performance-based compensation program as presented in closed session. So, I know, how we have the, um, yeah, right, I'm just going with that, right. Okay, now, uh, roll call.
Alvin, Abson, Brown?
No.
No, okay. Carter?
No.
All right, uh, Harris?
No.
Okay. Uh, sorry, so Ivy, Abson, Towers?
No.
Story?
No.
Carter?
No.
No. No.
Okay, motion. Motion not carried. It did not pass. Okay. Approve of the school year 2324 administrative employee contract. May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Okay, maybe here my move that the board of education approve the administrative, administrative performance contracts for Mr. Dana Drown, Ms. Sandra Brown, Mr. Ivy and Ms. Stacy Thorburn. Mr. Ivy, Turin Ivy. And Ms. Stacy, don't say this.
Yeah.
I'm talking too fast. Mr. Turin Ivy and Ms. Stacy Thorburn extending the contract to the end of the 2023-24 school year as presented to the board and discussed in closed session. Okay. Roll call.
Yes.
Alvin? Yeah, it's moved by Harris, second by Harris. Alvin, Addison, Brown?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ivy, Addison, Towers?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. That's what she wants to be like. Okay, approve of school year 2223 superintendent performance evaluation. We need a motion that the board of education approves of the consolidated results of the school year 2022-23.
Motion.
Superintendent Performance Evaluation, Dr. Marcus Alexander as position, presenting. So it was moved by Harris and second by Brown. Roll call.
Alvin, Addison, Brown?
Yes.
Carr?
All right, Harris?
Yes.
Ivy, Addison, Towers?
Yes.
Story?
Y E S S S. Brown?
Yes.
Carr?
S E Y.
Your last?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, we have jokes on the last night motion carried. All right, the board of education adjourned, opposed, I mean, the motion, the motion to end. Okay. Oh, motion to adjourn. It was a motion by Towers and second by Harris. Could we have a roll call? What time is it? Okay, roll call. Thank God, y'all. Thank you.
All right, Harris?
Yes.
Ivy, Addison, Towers?
Yes.
Story?
Absolutely.